Good evening. Since it's 6 o'clock, I'll call the Charter Township of Comstock Planning Commission meeting to order. If you would join me in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Are there any changes, Casey or Kyle?
I would request that we move approval minutes before citizen comment. There was an error with the software, it appears.
Okay. And with that change, I would be looking for a motion on the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item is the minutes of the last agenda, or the last meeting we had.
October 16th.
October 16th. And, yeah, the moratorium committee and the planning commission meeting minutes. Do we have any changes or adjustments? Sandy?
No.
Anybody?
I have a concern. Page four, the planning commissioner comments, letter B, there was an additional comment that was made, and I just have an ethical concern with not including it.
Okay. And it is?
It was that there was something to be said to Mr. Knight, but that that would be said after the meeting, and I'm paraphrasing, you'd probably have to go back and validate the video for what it was said, but...
Okay.
That's pretty close to what was said.
Any other changes?
Mr. Chair, you have two meeting minutes here, so is Mr. Lawrence referring to the second minutes or the first minutes?
Well, let's start with the first.
Thank you.
Mine was in reference to the meeting held on October 16th.
They're both on 2...
The second one, it was the final, it was the last...
The planning commission meeting.
Last commissioner comments at the very end of the meeting, before we adjourned.
Okay.
It's on page six of our packet. It's meeting within the minutes, it's page three, and it's the citizen comment area, apparently, in the middle of the page.
That's not what I'm referring to.
Oh, it's not?
I'm referring to the planning commissioner comments on page four, line 18, letter B. Sherwood, no additional comments.
For the 6:00 PM meeting, just for clarification.
Yes, thank you.
So what I would suggest is that you first start with the first draft joint PC moratorium committee meeting minutes?
Yes.
And then move on to the next...
We are.
...minutes.
Okay. Any...
I don't have any concerns with that part.
Okay. So I would entertain a motion to approve the moratorium meeting minutes on October 16th?
I make a motion to approve the minutes for the joint planning commission and moratorium committee minutes meeting held October 16, 2025.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, the second is the planning commission meeting minutes on October 16th. And that's where you want, where we have...
Yes, that's the, that's the one that I think we, while it was made as a side comment at the end, it was still a comment made in public, and probably is important to include.
Any other changes to the minutes or adjustments? If not, I would look for a motion with that, that adjustment on it.
I make a motion to accept the planning commission minutes for October 16, 2025, with the correction of Sherwood, the side comment there, both Sherwoods said.
Okay.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion with support, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, before we start on this part, tonight, we're really just reviewing the plant, the ordinance that we've been trying to put together for the last three years, I guess. And it is not final, it is still in the process, and even when it does become final, we do not approve it, we just recommend to the board. So, with that being said, we'll move on to citizen comments. A citizen may state their name, address, and may speak only one time for no more than three minutes. This time may not be given to another citizen to extend their time. The person speaking has the floor, and no other citizen shall speak during someone else's time. During this time, you will be making statements to the board without discussion from the board, members. But you are welcome to make appointment with planning and zoning staff to discuss your comments further. Please keep comments clean and respectful.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Do you want to make a distinction so people understand that this is the citizen comment portion of the meeting?
Right, this, this is...
We're going to move into a public hearing...
Right.
...after citizen comment regarding the battery energy storage system.
Right, we are doing citizen comment now, we are not doing the public hearing right now, that is later, when we get into the battery storage part of it. With that, you may begin.
Hey, I gotta get out of here. My name's John, my aunt retired yesterday, and we're having a party, and it started at 6:00, but I wanted to be here for this. I think the moratorium meeting, all, the committee, whatever you want to call it, they did a good job, I think it's very good that, you know, we finally have a decent setback of 2,000 feet in some areas, and I just read it over really quick and everything that shouldn't be by schools and everything like that, I think that is good. Regardless of that, we're gonna have a vote on this, you know, plan everything at the township, we know how that's probably gonna go, you know, I hate to say it, but it's probably not gonna get shut down and all this stuff, because township board does what the township board does, and they don't really care about the citizens, in my opinion, of what they have to say. You know, it's, it's sad when we have been saying that we don't want this thing next to the school for two, three years now, and somehow, it's, it's still being built there, you know? We as citizens don't want it there, but for some reason, it keeps, you know, oh, it's, you know, we'll find a different area, they haven't found a different area, I guarantee it, maybe the golf course, but I hate to see my hometown golf course and everything that I played since I was eight or nine years old, probably lose maybe nine holes, and they're gonna keep maybe 18 of it open, it's gonna kind of suck, you know? It's just, I hope that the township board kind of, you know, maybe passes this zoning requirement, or whatever you want to call this, I hope they do, but I don't have a lot of faith that they will actually push this through, because the planning commission seems to have, you know, a little bit more common sense than the people on the township board right now. You know, it's, uh, just, yeah. I don't support this BEST system, I have never supported anything that was electrical, that the school swapped, or anything like that, I was even at school board meetings back when they wanted to swap land with ITC, and I told them there, hey, you better watch out, because within five or 10 years, they're gonna put solar battery right in this area, and I pointed right to there, you know, and I hate to say it, I was right, it is sad that no one listened back then, now people are finally listening, and hopefully it doesn't go there, but it looks like it might go there, at least we have some setbacks now, that's not gonna be right next to the school. Thank you, bye.
Thank you.
Members of the planning commission, neighbors and fellow residents, my name is Dina O'Connor, I reside here in Comstock Township. Tonight, I rise not just as a concerned citizen, but as someone who believes deeply in the power of community voice and the responsibility of leadership to listen. Just hours ago, an hour ago, Channel 3 News reported that Franklin Partners LLC has paused its plans to build a data center in Pavilion Township. Why? Because they heard the voices of their community. Co-founder Don Shoemaker said, and I quote, "Public displeasure is not a way we look at doing business. We want to make sure our interests are aligned with the community." That statement should echo loudly in this room. It is a rare and commendable thing when a developer steps back, not because they were forced to, but because they chose to honor the concerns of the people. That is what responsive leadership looks like, that is what ethical business looks like, and that is what we in Comstock Township deserve. Now, let's talk about CIP and the proposed BEST project. Unlike Franklin Partners, CIP is not paused, they have not reconsidered, they have not aligned their interests with ours, instead, they've pushed forward despite repeated passionate and well-reasoned objections from residents, parents, educators and safety experts. We are not anti-progress, nor anti-technology, but we are pro-safety, pro-transparency and pro-community. And when a project raises serious questions about environmental impact, emergency response, proximity to schools and homes, it's just not reasonable, it's not responsible, or it is responsible to demand a pause. CIP should take a lesson from Don Shoemaker. Public displeasure is not a nuisance to be managed, it is a signal to be heeded, it is the heartbeat of democracy. And if a company cannot do business in a way that respects the people it affects, then it should not do business here at all. I urge all of you to stand with us, to demand that CIP listen, to insist that our township not be treated as a testing ground for risk, but as a community worthy of protection, respect and partnership. Let Pavilion Township be the example, let Comstock Township be next. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Tammy Keeler, Tammy Keeler. How many of you up there are engineers? I don't think any of you are. According to this, an engineer from the school that measured is supposed to be a mile away from a residence or a school, not a half mile, it's only a half mile away from that school. The only thing that they want to do is tap into that grid that you got there, that's all that they want, make them build their own grid somewhere else, not in our town. And for all you that think that BEST can come and take your property, or give it to consumers, can it make you sell it to them, and consumers cannot take it. And now, there's two bills on the floor, this is why they're in a hurry. There are two bills on the floor, I just spoke to Senator McCann's office today, 4027 and 4028. The state is not looking at any applications right now for the fact that this bill is still on the floor to give the township's control over, over these BEST systems. They don't, they're trying to make it so that they can't go through the state anymore. And I got the phone number right here to the representative, to the senator's office, if anybody wants it. And plus, the fire department is not trained to get all these people that are in, right here, right now, citizens of Comstock, out of harms way. They are not prepared at all, and you guys know this. And then, like I said before, last time, one of them blew up, somebody called the fire department, said sirens going off, they couldn't get a hold of nobody. Not, no BEST people were around, the company shut down. And yes, I have been talking to senators, I talked to one here that represents this town, I talked to Senator McCann's office, this is why they're in such a hurry, is because right now, they're not doing any applications for the BEST. This was this morning that I had called them. So if you guys want the number, I'll freely give it to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Members of board, neighbors and fellow residents, my name is Caitlin Schoen Burnett, and I reside at 713 North 30th in Galesburg. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of many Comstock community members who are deeply concerned about the proposal to place the BEST in our community. Let me be clear, our family does support clean energy and innovation, but what we don't support is the placement of an industrial-scale battery facility in the middle of a community where people live, work and raise their families. Let's start with the technical reality. This facility would house large-scale lithium-ion batteries, systems known to carry risks of thermal runaway, toxic gas release and fire propagation. These are not theoretical risks, they are documented in peer-reviewed studies and incidents reports from similar facilities across the country. The proposed site is too close to Comstock STEM Academy, Comstock Elementary and the backyards of neighbors that I care about. That proximity is not just irresponsible, it's indefensible. In the event of a fire or gas leak, evacuation protocols for children and residents become exponentially more complex. Lithium-ion fires cannot be extinguished with water, they burn hotter longer and release gases like hydrogen fluoride, which is corrosive and lethal in high concentrations. And yet, we're being asked to accept this risk in the name of grid stability. This isn't just about zoning, it's about ethics, it's about whether we as a township are willing to gamble with the health and safety of our families to accommodate a developer's timeline. Copenhagen Infrastructure Partners does not live here, they will not be the ones sheltering in place or rushing to evacuate classrooms and homes, we will, our teachers, our families and our firefighters. Our family and neighbors' opposition is not about progress, it's about protection, protection of our safety, our environment, our property values and the character of our town. First and foremost, safety, you know that lithium-ion batteries fires are not theoretical risks, they're real and they're dangerous. Across the country, BEST sites have experienced explosions, toxic smoke releases and fires that take days to extinguish. Even with advanced systems, there's no way to guarantee that accidents won't happen. And in a community like Comstock, surrounded by homes, schools, water and small businesses, that's a risk we cannot afford to take. Second, environmental and health concerns, these batteries contain hazardous materials, if there's a fire or a leak, contaminants will enter the soil, our air and our water systems. Comstock residents have worked hard to maintain a healthy environment, we shouldn't introduce a facility that could compromise that. This community should be against placing a necessary risk in the heart of our community. Our family urges you to listen to the voices of the residents who will live with these consequences, and to stand with us in saying no to the proposed BEST facility. I urge this board to reject the proposal outright, not delay it, and not revise it, reject it, because no amount of renewable energy benefit justifies placing a high-risk facility next to schools, family homes or in our community. I do thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, I spoke at the last meeting, when the BEST folks were here, I'd just like to reiterate, 40% of my properties in the plume zone that they showed in the last site map, I am right next door, there's a couple things I'd just like to say. The last call, the committee made a lot of strides to look at other properties, change importances and make things more attractive, put this somewhere else, that's an admirable step. I said this last time, a true partner, someone who wants to come in here and work with you the way installers should, is not gonna force you under any circumstance to put this next to a school, a greenhouse, my residential, all the other residential on the street, just because the infrastructure's a little closer, okay? A true partner is not gonna make you do that. There isn't really an answer to put this as close to the school. I work with lithium-ion all the time, I'm an IT professional, nearly a decade of experience, and I've seen it everywhere, I get it. The reality is this, BEST doesn't care, right? They don't care about us necessarily, they're here for the grid stability, and the last, last time they spoke about it, they couldn't tell you where that power plant provided the power first. This location is not gonna provide long-term benefit to the community in terms of jobs, they have given no assurance this is gonna provide long-term benefit to our grid either. They can't tell us where that power is gonna go first, they're the visiting team, they're here, and they're here to make a buck, and they're trying to determine where and how we play. And I would really urge you to remember that we're the home team here, you guys, all you guys are the home team, we're not gonna let a visiting team come in and tell us where we can play, where we can't play, what uniforms we have to wear, we'll schedule someone else. You guys have made a lot of work in other areas that don't require special needs permits, and that is considerably more appropriate for technology that's up and coming like this, there is so much happening in the lithium-ion space right now. This administration at the national level is a lot more cautious about it than the prior administration, I think rightly so, and that's why you're seeing a lot of the bills that some of my, so my peers here were speaking about. The last two comments, I'm just gonna make, I only got a minute left. Regarding well-being, right, I mean, what we're, what BEST is proposing here is that I sleep less than a mile away from a fire that may not be able to be put out, half my property could be impacted, I live on a well, and the worst part of it is their site map had one of them 50 feet from my property line. I don't care what they say about how far away the dwelling is, 50 feet from my property line was how close they wanted to put it. So, you know, when they talk about 70 decibels over 700 feet and that's the sound, I want to know what the source sound is, because that's gonna be my experience in my backyard, that's gonna be experienced for everybody. They didn't really have a great solution to stop the sound, and that's regardless of the safety problem. Just because energy is not being generated at this site, please don't confuse that with it not being a target for anyone that would harm our grid. There is a lot of potential energy in 400 megawatts, and there is zero reason why we should ever consider putting it at that site specifically. So give your own work the weight it desires, put it somewhere else.
Thank you.
Dr. Jeff Tanis, Superintendent of Comstock Public Schools, Avenue 3995 Prairie Hill Street, here in Comstock. In 1833, a small one-room schoolhouse was built in the village of Comstock and named in honor of Horace Comstock, who donated the land and funded its construction. Miss Betsy Percival was the first teacher in a 12-by-14 schoolhouse. In 1898, the original schoolhouse burnt down and was rebuilt as a two-room school, providing education for local children of the ninth grade, children who wanted to continue through high school, attended school in Galesburg or Kalamazoo. In 1906, Comstock Village became consolidated in what is known now as Comstock Public Schools, and a second story was added to the building to accommodate the grades nine through 12. In 1936, Public Works Administration project was announced in the amount of 49,000 to construct an auditorium, a gymnasium, a football stadium and a heating plant for the school. In the 1950s, the school eventually became known as Comstock High School. In 1966, a new state-of-the-art high school and athletic complex was built just up the road on 26th Street, which stands today as the current Comstock High School and Hammett Athletic Complex. The Comstock Public School District flourished for many years, serving as one of the area's top school systems. Enrollment in the district peaked in the late 1990s to over 3,000 students. In 1992, a new community auditorium was built next to the current high school. Today, the school buildings are beginning to, a slow process of being remodeled and repurposed. Starting in the 19, 2019, 2020 school year, a district reconfiguration merged Green Meadow and North Elementary Schools into a single schoolhouse in the former Northeast Middle School. With the creation of Comstock Elementary School, middle school students moved to North Elementary, which became Comstock Middle School. Green Meadow was reborn as Comstock Early Learning Academy. The district obtained land adjacent to the Comstock Elementary School in 2022, and designated that land for construction of a new STEM academy. Comstock schools started out educating children in the area for early settlers 192 years ago, and will continue to do so for many years to come. If allowed, Copenhagen officials will quickly build their BEST too close to our schools and then leave, most likely never to return. Their families will not live here, their children will not attend our schools. I'd hazard a guess that if the roles were reversed and a company called Comstock wanted to build a BEST adjacent to their child's school, they'd oppose it too. For the future of our community and our district, please require this proposed BEST be located more than a mile away from our nearest school. We live here and call Comstock home, Copenhagen does not. Our mission is to educate children, theirs is to seek profit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jeannie Kissinger, and you all know where I live, at least most of you do by now. I just want to remind you, when this thing starts doing its dirty deeds and doing our water in, where's that water gonna go? It's gonna go to the Kalamazoo River, all right? Where's the Kalamazoo River run off to? Lake Michigan. Do you want all these lakes contaminated because BEST has got, Copenhagen has got a line that you can connect the dots on their map from the other side of Michigan to Lake Michigan's side? Now, is that what you want? Because that means we're gonna have to hook up to city water to be safe, and when this happens, which it will, there's no doubt in my mind where you're gonna put it, and I am not a mile away from that thing. I am less than a mile, we measured it out. So therefore, what are we supposed to do? You're gonna give us two minutes notice, I'm supposed to pick up my loving fur babies here, and I'm supposed to put them in a car and take off with them, because they're in danger, and so am I. No, just don't cut it. Comstock cannot do this, we are not made to do this, the people from Ashamo and Atsigo also are trying to get rid of them, and it is the same company, because I've got them on site. So therefore, think hard, don't think with, oh cha-ching, cha-ching, think with your hearts. We have children, we have grandchildren, we have animals, and I'm sure Amber wouldn't want to see anything happen to her animals either. And the contamination will hit all of us, not to mention, out in Lake Michigan it goes, you want two contaminated lakes from the state of Michigan that nobody can enjoy anymore? Because that's right where it's going. I'm sorry, but I think it needs to be put to a public vote, to the citizens of Comstock, and my vote's gonna be no. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jessica Vetter, I live at 6869 East H Avenue. I'm a new resident, I would say, of Michigan and Comstock, I moved here in 2018, so I have a little bit of a different perspective than a lot of the people that I've been hearing. Everyone's lived here for 20, 30 years and been really, really proud to grow up here, and that's what I hope for my children. I moved here from New York City, it's a really big city, a lot of things like this are happening in the surrounding areas, I was actually, I moved from a suburb, I'm from Queens, New York, and we moved across the river to the Hudson Valley to get away from the city and get away from all those craziness, and I had to move here from there to get away from all of the things that are happening there that seem to be now coming for us. It's my first meeting, I'm a little nervous, but I really, really urge you guys to talk to everybody about how dangerous this could be. We moved to this particular community and bought 10 acres of beautiful land so that I could raise my kids in nature and have a great place to live, and I'm very, very nervous for what I see coming up with the BEST station, among other things, coming to my personal neighborhood, and I'm really, really discouraged in honestly my choice right now. We had a lot of places to move in Kalamazoo, a lot, and we chose here. We chose here for a reason, we really, really love it, and I hope that all of you can listen to us when we say this is not something that we want. I have a three-year-old and a one-year-old, I want to send them to the STEM university, I will not be. I'm, right now, not even wanting to send them to school in Comstock, period. I don't have a lot of belief in you, you have time to change it. My kids are 19 months and they're three years old. Please do that for me and help me have some faith in this community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Emily Murphy, Comstock resident. At the October 27th Comstock Public School Board of Education meeting, the board spoke... At the October 27th Comstock Public School Board of Education meeting, the board spoke on the board's continued concern about the proposed Bess facilities location within our township. They referred to the district commission risk analysis report from the third-party firm CTC Engineering. This was the best-designed Bess the assessor had ever seen but was still too close to the schools. He also stated he supports the Bess as a source of alternative energy. He would have no problem with the project if the proposed site were one mile down the road, but because of the large amount of contained energy, he had grave concern about the location of the Bess. As Copenhagen Infrastructure Partners half-heartedly put forward other locations that they would be willing to consider, the most serious location change had been by the Hickory Ridge Golf Course and Driving Range. This location would be only a half to three-fourths of a mile from the new STEM building and Comstock Elementary, which has had $18 million invested in renovations from the community. This is 52, at best, 75% of the recommended distance from the school to mitigate as such risks, as much risk as possible to our most vulnerable in the community. The quote, "How a society treats its most vulnerable is always the measure of its humanity", hits home for me when considering how much risk we are or are not willing to put our community's most vulnerable, our children, in. I would like to believe that our community would always be willing to protect our own, as well as others', children, because they are put wherever they are put. They aren't able to say they would prefer to go to a school farther away from a risky power facility. The decisions being made by those who want the Bess within the recommended one mile of these schools do not represent a society for the people. It represents a society against the people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Richard Hathaway, 3617 Silver Hills. I'm here as a citizen, not representing any formal organization. I am an engineer and I do numbers all day. My whole life, I've done them. So I looked at the time you would have, what I would call the escape time, if an incident occurred at the Bess plant. At average wind speed in Michigan, if you were at 300 feet, which I've been shown a couple of times, you have 12 seconds to solve the problem and get out of there. How the heck are you going to get kids off a playground in 12 seconds? I stretched it out to a half a mile. You've got 1.8 minutes. I stretched it out to a mile. You've got 3.5 minutes. That's at the average wind speed in Michigan. If you drop it down to 10 miles an hour where kids will be on a playground, you're talking at 300, you're talking 20 seconds. Tell me how you're going to get 30 kids off a playground in 20 seconds? Anyway, at a half a mile, you're up to three minutes of escape time. If you're a mile away, you're up to six minutes. Six minutes, to me, is probably the lowest value you should be at in proximity to a school. That's the one-mile distance that has been suggested. Even that has concerns because you have residents that are inside of that distance, and the school is inside of that one-mile radius. So please consider the numbers as you go through this ordinance. The numbers are what really matter. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's William Knight. I'm also a Comstock resident. First, I'd like to start by thanking the Planning Commission and the zoning and administering staff for all the work they've done and the revisions they've put in, all the tireless work, all the late nights, packed workshops and real revisions. At your request, the developer explored alternative sites, a good frith of effort to protect our children, nearby schools, yet in my opinions, every site is still way too close. Let me be crystal clear. I do not want this Bess facility in Comstock, but I do support moving this ordinance forward tonight. It's our last line of fence of local control after PA 233 and 234 stripped away most of it on November 29, 2024. You've held the line to cite most of the Township Board voting months ago to end the moratorium for financial reasons, yet you kept it intact, blocking development until we have a safer, more community-driven ordinance. The developer admits this has been a years-long project. They've already filed with the MPC claiming time restraints. That's calculated ambush, not urgency. With backdoor talks and little public information, we working this ordinance was the right thing to do, and I understand, if I understand correctly, it's not quite complete, and there may be another public hearing? That just gives us residents more time to speak, and I encourage every resident to do that. This isn't green energy. Don't mistake that. Green energy makes power, and Bess only stores it. And with 11%, roughly, of Michigan's grid being renewable, most of it's coal and gas charged at night. Add a child mine, lithium, site, water waste, and toxic disposal on our farms, this is industrial outsourcing, not clean energy. I urge the board to move this forward tonight, but keep the moratorium strong. Stop the ambush. We want clean energy, done right, not forced through. Keep the community intact, keep the community's minds at heart, and act now. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
My name is Paul Herter, 400 Northers, 33rd Street. Now, when I was going to build my house, they told me exactly what I had to put into it, even insulation. And I can see certain things that are mandated for structural, but insulation is not. And when you turn that around to what the board is wanting to put in our township, which is potentially a bomb or a fire hazard, which the township's already said they cannot put out, I think that's bad, really. Now, noise level two, I understand that these battery pods got to be cooled. I look at my Callister right across from my lot, and there's about 30 of these air-conditioning units that are being brought in there. I don't know where they're going, but I can imagine that they're going to the battery thing to cool batteries off. That's going to be a major noise factor right there of how they're going to cool these batteries. I don't want this thing in the township. I hope you consider and turn it down.
Thank you.
I'm Dale Rudd. I live at 6160 Woodley Drive. My family just moved here in May. I was born in Kalamazoo, grew up in Galesburg, moved to Kalamazoo for about half my marriage, and then was in Galesburg again for the second half of my marriage, same marriage. And yeah, so we just moved here. We have four kids in Comstock Public Schools. They've been attending, this will be their fourth year, so we were driving them from Galesburg. So we chose to come here from Galesburg when we didn't necessarily have a lot of money to spend on gas to drive them to Comstock. But you're hearing a lot of emotion from us because we care, and you're hearing, if people read things, because they did research, they took the time out of their day, you know, we're all working, and they took the time to understand what this is all about, educate ourselves, and so that we can speak with knowledge about this and say what we actually think about something, not just, you know, reading a Facebook post or somebody's angry comment about something. So please hear that through any emotion or nerves. But I don't know if you guys live here. I don't know if you send your kids to Comstock Schools or if you have grandkids in the schools. But this is very near and dear to me and many of us here. And like Jessica said, we chose to be here. We saw, I've been in this area my entire life. I know the reputation. I know the history of Comstock, especially the schools. And, you know, I get that all the time, like, why did you choose Comstock? And you can ask me about that. I'll tell you why. And one reason is that we saw the promise of what is being built for the future, and we want our kids to be a part of that. And this is really scary, you know? It's not, it's not nothing. So please remember that with new challenges, you have the opportunity with these changes to make a difference and continue the difference that you have been a part of in this community. So we ask you to do that for us. With great power comes great responsibility, so please hear us and speak for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Dickman, I am a Township President. I pretty much said my piece about what I think about the changes in the ordinance. The last time I addressed this commission, I reread them again tonight before I came down here, and there's a couple of things in there that I really, I really didn't agree with, but in the grand scheme of things, I really don't have a whole lot of effect on them. And I just wanted to put forth my thanks to the Moratorium Committee and this commission for all the hard work that they've put into this. Chair Bruce Nichols actually said at one point, no matter what we do, there's somebody that's not going to be happy. And I, and I fully agree with that. Everybody is looking for the perfect solution. You're never going to find it, you know? As far as wanting like a mile setback, the township's only six miles by six miles, 15,000 people, and with the schools scattered around, I don't think there's a spot in the township that can be set back a mile from a school. Guys, thanks for your hard work. I appreciate it. And for what it's worth, to everybody else, I worked with lithium ion batteries and automotive applications for about the last 20 years of my career, and they're just like anything else. They're just like the, when FDR was looking to electrify America, electricity will kill you. And there's a lot of electricity stored in one of these, but if you respect it, you can use it to your advantage. And my friends, thank you. Good evening.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, I would, I would close citizen comment at this time and, or public hearing. No, it's citizen comment. And we'll move on to the battery energy storage system, and I'll turn this over to Kyle and to Rob.
All right, so the next item is the public hearing that is scheduled for tonight. It's on the draft language of the revisions to our existing battery storage energy system ordinance. There's certain, the Moratorium Committee and the Planning Commission have been working for maybe 10 months on these revisions by hearing from experts in the field and studying the issue, and finally came up with some revisions to the ordinance. That's what we're here on today, are these revisions, to hear public comment on them. This board is just a recommending body to the Township Board, so anything this board determines with regard to the language would have to be approved in ordinance form by the Township Board. Tonight is a public hearing on it for the board to hear from you on this Bess ordinance, the battery storage energy system ordinance and revisions to it. I would say that the board may not take action on it tonight. They could take action on the recommendation, but they don't have to. They can table the matter after the public hearing. There's going to be another public hearing scheduled for November 13 to discuss further revisions to the language regarding a floating zoning district for Bess energy systems. So it's very likely that the board will choose after the public hearing, once they close the public hearing, to postpone the matter to the next hearing date so that they can take action one way or another on the full text. The Planning Commission, after hearing, public comment, reserves the right to make further additions and subtractions to the language provided, so they can make further revisions after hearing public comment. But with that, be looking for a motion to open the public hearing.
I look for a motion?
I make a motion to open the public hearing for the Bess ordinance. Support.
I guess I'd take a roll call for this one. Kyle, are you going to do that, or would you like?
James could do it.
You can do it.
Okay.
Lawrence?
Yes.
Novak?
Yes.
Weintraub?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Breiter?
Yes.
Bloomfield?
Yes.
6O?
We are open for public hearing.
So in the public hearing, members of the public can approach the podium, they comment to the Planning Commission. They would each have three minutes for public comment.
This is what the Bess sounds like. Can you hear that? This is 50 feet from our home. You want to listen to this all night long? I'm sure that you don't. I told you guys the other night, they're snowballing you. They're not going to give you nothing in return. They're not going to be there when we need them. Think about the land, the children, and the people of this community. People just moved here so they could feel safe. Do you think they feel safe now? I don't think so. It's right in people's backyards, that golf course is. Their backyards run right up to it. Do you, do more research. These people are trying to snowball you into this. I mean, you guys get snowballed into this, rezoning it, it's not even industrial, it's not zoned as, really not industrial. It should not be changed. It should stay the way it is. We do not want this. We do not need this. And like somebody said, anywhere it goes, you're going to be close to people, animals, buildings. And I hope, pray to God, it's not in your backyard and you have to listen to this all night long because that noise travels. We want our vote. The residents want our vote on this. We don't want it. Y'all know how we're going to do it. Y'all know we're all going to say no to this. But you guys are thinking about the jingling in your pockets. I have already talked to Matt Hall. I talked to that other representative McCann, and I'm trying to tell you what the battery storage system is about, but you're not listening to us. You think we don't know what we're talking about? We do our research, do yours. And then the regular board has to do theirs also, not just you guys. And we know two people right now that have their hand in this. And Mr. Sherwood should never vote on this. He's in it stock and barrel. So are the Sherrys. I'll tell you that right now. But you guys have to understand, I don't know who else's hands are in this, but we do not want it. Why don't you listen to your residents? And you think or get voted back on the board or readmitted back into the Planning Commission if you do this? No, we are going to get rid of you, all of you. Thank you.
I didn't plan this, Dina Oko. Did I do that? Sorry. I was thinking about something, so I'm glad I had this opportunity to come up a second time. First of all, thank you very much. I know you all are working hard. A couple of years ago, I went to the old Comstock Board because I was concerned where I live on Wondell Avenue, my street and many other streets dead-end into the Kalamazoo River. And I had specifically asked a question because I'd never heard what would happen if a freight train derailed that railroad runs all the way through, right? That railroad runs all the way through, right? And it had hazardous chemicals or something? And we need to evacuate. Where are we going to go? I'm, I'm, I'm a, I'm a pretty, I'm a good Girl Scout. I'm well-prepared. I'm prepared to evacuate with my three dogs, but I've never prepared to swim across the Kalamazoo River. And that seems to be the only way out. I never got a response from anybody about what would occur and how we would be safely evacuated. And so now I think about this BESS and Hickory Ridge is right across the street. And I, I don't, I don't know if me and the three dogs can swim across the river to safety. I don't know how you guys would get us out, any of us. And there's miles of streets with houses and schools and churches. Okay, thank you, please. I know you guys are doing a really great job and I know you're listening. Please keep fighting for us. Please, 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 thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I live right across the street from Dina. And if Dina's at work, guess who gets to get her three dogs and my three dogs? Me. The other thing is, is that you guys really, really need to listen. I've been here 68 years, from the time I was born till now, unless God pulls my strings tonight, which I don't think he's going to. You've got to give it a break. This township has spoken. These people have spoken. They don't want it. And I've been up here umpteen times. And as for what Mr. Hawthorne said back there, do you know how long it takes kids to get out of a building and get on a bus? If you're trying to get them off the playground, good luck. You've got five minutes supposedly for a fire drill? In my 15 years driving school bus, it never happened. I could have had an iron prod and poked them and it still wouldn't have made them go in faster. You guys are talking about kids. Children that are hopefully, eventually going to grow up and have more kids to put in this town because right now, you've got the baby boomers that have come up. And there aren't a whole bunch of kids, but there are some. Give them the same respect that we had when we were growing up. No dangers. You're putting a danger right on a hill. And then they say they're going to put some kind of center down there for the kids. Come on, they're giving you a line of BS. I don't believe these people. They are giving you a line that stretches from here to Lake Michigan. I don't believe them, I don't trust them. Of course, there's a few members on the boards I don't trust either, so we'll go that far. But I'm just spilling it out there. We can't rely on God when we're trying to evacuate. He's not going to help us move a car that quick. We can't move kids that quick. It's going to take, from the bus garage to whichever schools, it's going to take at least six minutes for those buses to get backed up and get out. Diesel buses don't go that fast. And then you got to park them, you got to load all these kids. Well, where are you going to take them? Because if they're within the reach of their schools, you can't take them home? Just think about that.
Thank you.
Hi, Jessica Better. Listening to the engineer speak, I would be really interested to see an actual report done by them explaining that further. That's terrifying. It's absolutely terrifying. My three-year-old can't move like that. I also don't know of any of you that have been in a mass panic situation. I don't want to say 9/11. I was a, I was a fully-formed person for 9/11 and I lived and worked in New York City for 15 years as an adult. Any form of mass panic, any form, is absolutely terrifying. And people don't know what to do. They freeze. Adult men freeze. Women know what to do. Adult men freeze. And they have no clue what to do in a mass panic situation. Nobody knows, children don't know. It is absolutely terrifying. So, hearing them speak about that and thinking that children have 15 seconds, a minute, three minutes, is not enough time. 15 minutes is not enough time. No, nobody here knows what that's like. And I will cry talking about it. So, I don't really want to talk about my personal experiences. With that, nobody's prepared. None of you are prepared? And you need to have some kind of report done to look into that further so that you're aware of what that's like. Because as somebody that moved here and came from a situation like that multiple times in my life, it is not something that I wish on anybody in my township. Also, there was a woman who spoke about the contaminants that could possibly come from a battery plant like this over a longer period of time, which obviously, we won't see. Our children probably won't see. But again, I come from a bit of an older place where things like that have been in place for a long time. And I was born into that and we live there. And we left. Everybody left. Everybody has cancer. Everybody, all of them. Three out of four of my immediate family had cancer. And we all grew up right around all kinds of situations just like this. My whole family, aunts and uncles around the corner. My aunt died from cancer. Two of her children had cancer. Several of us have infertility issues. And we left, all of us. We live in Florida now. We live here. We moved away from the trisate area because of the congestion of those kinds of things and the effect it was having on our health. I moved here 10 years ago. I am in remission from lupus and I'm a very healthy woman. That should say enough. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have too much more to add. I just want to maybe put this on the record for where it lies. The, the original meeting, I think it was close to two years ago, maybe a year and a half ago, where this parcel that's under consideration was rezoned for agricultural from commercial. I was at that meeting and I, I remember the owner of that parcel stating the reason for the rezoned agricultural was to represent the current use of the property as it had been farmed for the last 20 or so years. And you guys can all look up the minutes to that meeting. I'm sure it was recorded by the mic. He was standing right here. So, you can imagine my surprise, which I think is shared by the school board, when we saw the presentation from BESS at the meeting this year. And the timelines overlapped. They said they were working and looking at that parcel around that same time. My understanding is that the, if you're looking for a special use permit, and I'm no expert, but I, it's my understanding that should have been a conversation at the rezoning because special use permit, if BESS was truly working with us that long, that was in, you know, that was in contention there. And at the very least, it's shady, right? At the very least, it's misleading to the neighbors and everyone at that, at that meeting. And I don't, I don't say that, you know, with anything negative to this board. I say that strictly of, from the owner's comments that they, and speaking as a neighbor. You know, I, I purchased my home in the height of the, the house craze in COVID. People my age, you know, it's tough to get in the housing market at my age. I'm, I'm less than 30. I scraped and fought for that opportunity and it's supposed to be the house that I started a family in and raised children in. And now I'm looking at a proposal where, you know, regaining 400 megawatts is, is a hilarious number to even consider, close to a greenhouse, an auto shop, a school. I mean, that, notwithstanding the fact they want to put one of these 50 feet from my property line where I'm supposed to have kids and a house that I fought for in a market that's rigged against us. I mean, that is grave. That's really hard. And just like a lot of people that's newer to Comstock, we chose this location for the exact absence of things like that. I'm from the east side of the state and I can echo a lot of what our friend from New York here said tonight. So, please do think about your residents. You know, you, you can't, we can't have it both ways. But the, just the concept of this still being under consideration, the way it came up, what's on that street, what's around it, the investments you have in your schools, the investments you have in your communities, we can't have it both ways. And this is a visiting team. They just want to make a buck. If they want to put infrastructure in somewhere, to put this somewhere more appropriate, hire local help, local people from this community that would benefit during that construction and get it somewhere appropriate. But please stop considering that partial. It's highly concerning to everyone here for a good reason. Thank you.
Thank you.
One thing I wanted to add, again, my name's Dale Rudd. I work in the outdoor recreation industry and I was recently at the Michigan Outdoor Summit. And there are nonprofits and for-profits that all come together and try to just improve the economy as far as the outdoor industry goes in Michigan. And you can look on MEDC, Michigan Economic Development Corporation. Their website will show how Michigan has just continually increased in that industry, even when other industries in Michigan hasn't, haven't. So, since the pandemic, you know, everybody started getting outside more and that has been a real boon to Michigan. So, keeping in mind the environmental impact and how that is attracting people as a whole to our state is really, really important. And these people that I'm working with, that I'm connected with, are pushing that forward for Michigan. And there's actually projections that show that we're on track to be as successful and well-known in the outdoor industry as places like Colorado and Arizona. So, just consider that, maybe look into that a little bit and see how that connects with the economy here in Michigan. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, there was a written correspondence sent in, I believe it was yesterday. They are requesting it to be read at the meeting for the record. So, I'm not sure if you want to take that over. It was from John Paver.
You can read it?
My voice is a little gone, but I can try. To whom my concern, below is my statement. Do you want to start the timer, Kyle? Okay. To whom my concern, below is my statement. I would like read aloud at the 10:30 Planning Commission meeting. Please confirm receipt of this email and that the statement will be read at that time. Town hall statement, John Paver, Comstock Township resident. Good evening. My name is John Paver and as a resident of Comstock Township, I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. I am opposed to the proposed battery energy storage system. And while I recognize the township has adopted new zoning regulations, ordinance 543 for these systems, I remain concerned about whether they truly protect our community. On the positive side, the ordinance sets a 500-foot minimum setback from occupied dwellings on non-participating properties, limits the height of the structures to 15 feet and requires emergency response, planning, hazard mitigation, underground wiring, screening, and decommissioning financial assurances. These are all steps in the right direction. However, I respectfully submit that these measures may not go far enough. A 500-foot buffer is better than nothing, but it is insufficient given the risk associated with large-scale battery systems such as thermal runaway fires, toxic gas release, or explosion hazards. There is no guaranteed 6,000-plus-foot setback from sensitive sites like schools, daycares, or assisted living centers. That should be minimum, not an option. The hazard emergency response plans are prepared by the applicant, not the township. Without independent verification and dedicated funding, we cannot assume that they will protect first responders or residents. Decommissioning funds are required, but the ordinance allows bonds or credits or letters of credits. Those can become worthless if the valve unfolds. We need cash back assurances and regular reviews to make sure cleanup funds will be there decades from now with regular contributions to an escrow account specific to decommissioning. Another concern is that these systems are approved as special land uses in agricultural and manufacturing zones, meaning they could be sited near residential neighborhoods or schools. Even if setbacks are technically met, the noise, glare, and visual impact can still degrade property values and quality of life. Therefore, I urge the township board and planning commission to require full public review of the hazard and emergency response plan, including worst-case fire and chemical release scenarios. Expand the setback from 500 feet to at least 6,000 to 8,000 feet for all sensitive land uses. Ensure fire and EMS training is paid for by developer and codified in the host agreement and funds placed into escrow. Mandate annual public reporting on safety inspections, emergency drills, and the status of decommissioning funds with enforcement costs paid for by the developer and funds placed in escrow. Guarantee transparency. The community deserves to know how these systems are monitored and enforced with stipulations that are legal and attorney costs for enforcing the agreements are paid for by the developer with funds placed in escrow. In summary, the new zoning regulations are a starting point, but they are not yet sufficient to guarantee the safety of our residents, our schools, or our first responders. If this project is forced through, we must insist on stronger oversight, greater transparency, and enforceable accountability from day one. Thank you for your time. John Paver, Comstock Township resident.
Thank you, Casey. Sorry. Okay, yes.
I would note for the record that we also have a written communication from Stephen Esty representing CPI.
Okay.
Chair, I would like to see if we could have that letter read also, either by legal counsel or Casey or Kyle.
Nope, you're good.
Okay. This was sent from Stephen Esty on Tuesday, October 28, at 2:51 PM. Kyle/Ben, I wanted to give you some additional context for the proposed changes. The thought was that by creating a floating overlay for large all-site BESS, the township board would have discretion as to where BESS may be located and could further restrict the use by setting a minimum acreage. This provides flexibility, for example, with properties like the golf course. This is also similar to how floating overlays are handled in other ordinances. The remaining changes reflect what is standard in this industry and, and under, sorry. The remaining changes reflect what is standard in the industry and under other zoning ordinances where, for example, bonds and decommissioning are issued when building permits are pulled or in the context of community host agreements upon commercial operation. These changes make sense as until the property is actually under construction or operational, there is no need for these types of financial obligations. And in the case of the community host agreement, the project does not generate income until operational. These changes, in addition to being consistent with model ordinances throughout the state, are also consistent with the state act. We plan on tuning the meeting this Thursday and would be happy to address any questions related to the proposed provisions at that time. Thank you, Stephen Esty.
Thank you, Casey. I think at this point, we need to close public comment. Take a motion?
I move we close the public hearing.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. At this point, we can discuss this if you would like to. Amber, would you like to start us?
For those of you that are new to the meeting, this is a rolling joke because it always starts at this end. Thanks, Larry. I think we, first of all, thank you to the residents because you all came incredibly well-prepared and well-informed and appreciate the dialogue that you shared. I think I took like two pages of notes because I think it gives us a lot of things we need to think about. And I recognize that we still have some potential adjustments that we may want to make. I'm not sure, you know, I think we're not discussing those at this point. I don't know what I should or shouldn't comment on in terms of that. But just a couple of the comments that kind of resonated for me that I'll share. First of all, I want to do some more homework on the bills that were stated for 4027 and 4028. I think there's some homework that's worth looking into there. I think that I really appreciated the metaphor of the home team versus the visiting team. And I think that, you know, perhaps in our last meeting even, we might have gotten a little carried away and we might need to pump some brakes a little bit because I have some concerns and some questions that I've thought up even myself since that meeting. And then seeing some of their suggested revisions certainly give me pause. I've thought about the lot of risks and I don't know that we have talked to anybody in the Department of Ag, but I'm very curious. I know just in my professional life, there are things that we do in PetSmart stores in the state of Michigan because of the Great Lakes that we don't do in other stores. And so I highlighted that as something that I think I want more information on. So, you know, all of this said, one, again, thank you for doing your homework and helping us to continue to do this better. But I'm not as confident today as I was. I'll say that.
Craig?
I too appreciate the community coming prepared tonight. It did raise a few other questions that we need to discuss among us, and thank you.
Joseph?
I appreciate the public comments. I felt that many of you came in well-prepared, and that's very, very nice. I don't feel we're ready to move forward with any sort of recommendation. I think we should table this and continue to work with the public comments and work with other inputs and continue to come up with our best way to protect the community and control this sort of development.
Thank you, Joseph. James?
I too want to thank the public. I heard you, as probably all of us up here heard. We got things to discuss as a commission. There's some other things we need to work on. And I feel this time we need to think about it. That's all I got. Thank you.
Sandy?
I know I'm last, and I've been sitting here trying to figure out how I'm going to say this. I'm usually last for those of you who don't know. But I'm still not ready when it gets to me. I'm going to say the same things they did. You know, it is so important that all of you, whether you're nervous or not, it's your first time, you all need to continue to come, take courage from us, from yourselves, whoever. But you all need to continue to keep us informed. We work for you, the people. And when we take our oath of office, it is to protect the public's safety, health, and welfare. And I think that this board takes that very seriously. I know I do. So with something like this that is so new, it's, there's a lot to still learn. And last Thursday, Amber and I and Jim attended a conference downtown, and Kyle was there. And we did go into, we went into like five meetings, I believe. But one of them was on decommissioning. It's okay if I talk about this, isn't it, Ralph?
Sure.
Okay. I just don't want to get myself in trouble. But when we went in, we listened, and it was put on by MSU. They had all the information we needed and wanted about solar panels and wind. But when I said, Amber, raise your hand, ask about battery decommissioning. So she does, and she did a great job. And their answer from MSU was, what, Amber?
We don't know. Their lifespan is still too early, and so we don't have enough information on some of that decommissioning yet because we haven't experienced it.
And that is correct. I don't, were you in that conference, Jimmy, with us?
Yes, I was.
Okay. So that in itself makes you want to pump the brakes. There's just a lot that, it's so new. And what is, you know, what's our end goal here? What's our end goal for our residents, you know? Is this going to raise our electric bills in the future, you know? And if it does, I'll pick on Greg for a sec here. You're a high usage in your business. If you're spending $60,000 a year for electric and you get an 18% increase to 20, what's that going to cost you a year?
I can't think it out.
About $11,000. And where's that going to put you? How many customers can you throw that additional cost on and still expect them to come back? And you're not even open 12 months out of the year. So when you start to put the business sense behind some of this for just not even you residents with your utility bills, and we put the businesses in with there, it has to be good for all of us. That's part of our job. So I think I said enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. Go ahead, Amber.
I actually have a question for Attorney Thal, if I could. So I think that part of the urgency that we were all feeling was this, the moratorium was through the end of December, and so we felt like we have to get any recommended ordinances adjusted. I guess my question is, what happens on January 1st? Like, is the moratorium just magically lifted? Is it, like, where do we stand if we're still working?
That I'm not sure on, because I haven't looked at it. But I mean, maybe Kyle can address it if you're more familiar with the moratorium. I'm not really familiar with the ordinance itself on the moratorium. But typically, those ordinances, when the time expires, the moratorium expires. But you also have other timelines involved here too because they've sent a notice triggering the Act 233 process, which means that they are triggering the process to go to the state of Michigan, which preempts our local zoning. So, you know, that's another part of it.
Have you heard then about either of those two bills that were mentioned today? Like, do you know anything about that?
If they're what I'm thinking of, you know, they've been proposed, but I don't believe that they have. And again, I can't really speak to the fact, but my understanding is they're not going anywhere.
Okay.
Thank you, Amber. I too am very happy to hear the citizens speak out and tell us what they think. And it's nice to see how informed everyone is. We have a lot of work to do, it appears, and we intend to do that. Kyle, have you got anything to add to this?
Oh, I was just going to say, so, you know, if, what I'm hearing now is that you probably would want to postpone any action on the proposed language. We're going to have another meeting on the 13th, where there'll be further public hearing on a floating zone for it.
Yeah.
And then, you know, you could then consider more with regard to the whole, all the language involved, if you want. And obviously, as I said earlier, you have the opportunity to make revisions to the language after the public hearings.
I propose we table until the next meeting.
I would like to move that we table this to the next meeting.
If we, I was going to say, if we move through this motion, does that end our conversation? Because I have another question.
So you have a motion and a support. Now you can have discussion on the motion.
I don't know if we've had support. Did somebody support?
No.
I thought you did.
I thought I heard a support, but maybe not.
Yeah.
Wasn't for me.
Joe made the motion?
Yeah, I did.
Joe made the motion, so we just need support.
To table.
I'll support.
Okay. Let's do a roll call.
If you want, you can have discussion on the motion.
Yeah, I'd like to have some.
Let's do discussion. Amber, you can start again.
Thanks. I guess my concern and then, maybe this is a question again for you, Attorney Thal, but like, we had talked about this floating overlay. And quite frankly, like, I'm not convinced that that's the right decision anymore. And now we have snowballed ourselves into this situation of we're about to have another public hearing. And I think we all took what we heard pretty seriously about still the proximity to the school. I think that that's still a very real risk. And so we have yet another public hearing, which sure, we can hear more from the community, which is always good. You can tell that it's good. It's helping us. But I also don't want to keep having public hearings on things that, if we're not sure. So I guess that's just my concern. I agree about tabling it tonight. Certainly, we're not prepared for anything else. But I'm also not sure that the floating overlay is the right solution.
And certainly, that is a discussion that you'd have after your next public hearing. So just because it's put up for a public hearing doesn't mean it's something that you're bound to at all. It's just like the text that we're looking at now. You're not bound to that text. It's for public comment on the concepts and the issues and the language. But then the Planning Commission reserves the right to go back over it and make revisions and make a recommendation that might be different based upon comments.
I'd like to see us as a committee, after the next public hearing, go over some of the real concerns that raise questions from the residents.
Joseph?
I agree completely. I guess it's too late to cancel the public hearing. We've already scheduled it. It's been probably been published. So we will go ahead and have that. We will have more input. But we should put on that agenda, following the public hearing, a workshop to work on that input and obviously further revisions.
James?
I believe we need more discussion. We need to work on this and find comment and get to where, if we're going with it or what we're going to do. That's all.
Sandy?
I guess I wonder if there's any interest with this board along with working with the moratorium committee again. With, I mean...
I think we would be open to that.
More heads are better than one.
Yeah.
So how would we do that? Kyle, Attorney Thal?
So right now, on your November 13th agenda, you have this public hearing for an overlay. You have a public hearing for a conditional rezoning. A public hearing for the chicken ordinance. And also a public hearing for the accessory structures. On top of that, you also have a presentation from the Upjohn Institute regarding housing. So I'm not advocating one or the other for November 13th. I'm just letting you know you do have other items as well. But based on your discussion and from the public, you are going to want to continue this. So the 13th may be a time as well to digest any additional comments and then set a separate meeting for further discussion.
And at that meeting, we can go through all of the comments that we've, we think are very pertinent to this.
Yes.
And if possible, could we move the Upjohn presentation?
So I won't chime in on that. Our only meeting in November is the 13th due to the holiday. And then our next meeting is down to December 11th. The Upjohn Institute, I need to confirm. We're working on a grant to fund that, and we do not get the grant money until that is complete. And we have that housing study in hand. I can check with Senator Hess to see when that grant is up and then relay it to you all, hopefully early next week.
Is there any appetite for a special meeting?
Absolutely. We should add another meeting as soon as we can, yeah.
Different day or whatever?
Yeah, agree.
I would, we may have the 20th available, which would be, if we could do it in the evening, so that the residents can come for the workshop.
How late in the evening?
I'm sorry.
How late in the evening do you want it?
Well, our normal time.
Yeah.
Our 6 o'clock meeting.
It's not 3 o'clock.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, 3 o'clock's hard for me, too.
Yeah, 20th at 6.
I'm just throwing it out there.
Right now, we have... You're in discussion, but you still have a motion on the table.
We have a motion on the table, right?
Yes, we do.
Just to clarify, before we start planning anything else, you have a motion on the table.
I guess we will move on to the vote if we're done discussing. And I think we should do a roll call, just so everybody knows how everybody feels.
Chair, Bluefield?
Can you explain where the vote goes, please, so everybody understands and thank you?
Do you want to, Robert?
Okay, so what you're voting on is to table the matter. You know, and you're going to address it at the next meeting, but that still doesn't mean that you have to make final decisions. But you're tabling discussion of this public, of the language from this public hearing to the next meeting. So a vote yes means that it will be tabled to the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Further questions on the motion?
No, I don't think so.
Thank you.
Chair, Bluefield?
Yes.
Kreiser?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Weintraub?
Yes.
Nowak?
Yes.
And Lawrence?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay. Any other businesses we're going to, or old business, I guess?
Do you want to see if we can set a meeting?
Yeah, I think that's where we should do, set the meeting.
Under new business?
Yeah, we can do it under new.
Okay.
Can we set, can we look to see if the 20th will work?
The 20th, the room is free. So the 20th at 6:00 PM for a joint meeting or just a Planning Commission meeting?
Do we want a joint meeting?
I think we should.
I agree.
I agree. We should. More heads together.
Okay.
And this will be for the best workshop?
Yes.
Perfect. I will let the clerk know to get that noticed.
Thank you. Okay. Any other business? Anybody have anything else that they need to... Okay. We're going to have citizen comment and the rules still apply. A citizen may state their name, address, and may speak only one time for no more than three minutes. This time may not be given to another citizen to extend their time. The person speaking has the floor, and no other citizen shall speak during someone else's time. During this time, who will be making statements to the board without discussion from the board members, but you are welcome to make appointment with the planning and zoning staff to discuss your comments further. Please keep comments clean and respectful.
I'm sorry about my earlier statement. But yes, this is on the floor.
Attorney Michael, phone line here.
In his office. If you'd like, there's this number and...
Attorney's, the red one in front of you with the person on it.
Oh, okay. I got it. I can give you guys the number. It is 1-517-373-5100. This is as of this morning, when I got this information.
4027.
4027 and 4028. It's already on the floor, from what the lady had told me. So it's already there. This is why the battery plant is trying to hurry this up. And like everybody said, our citizens matter. You are going to have people moving out of here. You put that battery plant anywhere in Comstock. They come here because it's a safe place, like they said. And I hope you all understand that. They want to be safe. They want to feel safe sending their kids to school. Like I said, people think, you know, I don't know what I'm talking about. I called two representatives today. And you can do that. Do your homework, people. That's all I'm saying. Call these representatives. They'll tell you what's going on. This McCain, he's been fighting this all over Michigan, he said. If he wasn't in Lansing fighting the, you know, what's going on now, then he, his secretary said he'd probably be here. But, yeah. So I thought I'd let you all know that. You can also get ahold of Representative Hall. He can also tell you what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you.
As I sat back down, and I was thinking, five miles or five minutes, and you've got kids on the bus, okay? And Comstock isn't that wide. Where are you going to take all those kids? They can't go home. You're going to be responsible maybe for them down here at Township Hall? Because their places are going to be contaminated. Just think about that. Where are you going to go with them? Where are you going to push those bus drivers to? Because those parents are going to want to get their hands on their kids. And if they don't, you're going to be looking at trouble. And I don't blame them one bit. But you've really got to think, not just the kids, but the residents, the people, the businesses. Landscape Farms is right across the street from me. How are they going to get all those people out of there? We got a problem, guys. Let's ship this thing out and stop talking about it. We don't have any place safe to put it. Maybe the Sahara Desert wants it, but we don't. It would be a lot safer there. But I'm just saying, where are you going to take these kids? There is nowhere. You can take these kids and just take them off a bus that isn't going to be in the way of this. Nowhere. And being a bus driver, yeah, I do know what I'm talking about. The only reason I left was because I had a medical problem and I had to leave because I had a drug I was taking that they wouldn't allow for the state. But I know what I'm talking about when I'm talking about these kids and the buses. You've got to think about that. Don't think about the money aspect, like I said before. Think of it with your heart instead of with your head and the money signs that are floating around. around. Because you may not get that money. The state is not looking at those petitions. We found that out this morning. And as for I and Tammy Keeler, I'm going to tell you right now, we both do our homework. It's not something that just comes off our head. We are on there day and night, looking for the stuff that is the negative part of this plant, that nobody else is seeing. Take your rose colored glasses off, folks. It's not what you're seeing. Let's see what's really out there, which is not good. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? If not, I will close public comment. And we'll get updates from other boards.
Okay, I got a couple of things. From the clerk's office, don't forget to vote November 4th. We had a presentation from Metro Transit, which is going to be on your ballot for a renewal of a millage. The CABA budget was approved for 2026. The second reading for the rezoning of 7667 Arden was approved, which was Landscape Farms. And the first reading of 6454 East ML was approved for the first reading. Commercial, a commercial rehabilitation district was established at 5757 East Cork, which is the old sign art building for High Tech Electric, which they'll be moving into, which was a good thing for us, for the township. And the last thing is, the attorney bills will be put into the board packets under reports. And I find this is going to be very helpful for a lot of you who watch what goes on in the meetings, but you kind of need just a little bit more information to see what's actually going on in the township. Because it, when you see what's being billed and you look at what's happening in board meetings, it kind of goes hand in hand. So just make things easier for you to understand what's happening. Thank you.
Thanks, Sandy. Zoning had a meeting. On my paper, I had all the wrong address. I had their home address and not the address of the place. Do you have that address?
No, I don't have the address. I don't know if there's a home there. It is a stable.
Right.
I don't know exactly what it was.
Right, they didn't have an address with it.
Correct.
But anyway, it was a division of property. We approved it because the frontage was, well, we reduced the requirement on the frontage, but it was because behind the piece of property in the front, they had a huge piece of property behind it. So we felt that that would suffice. And what they wanted was the driveway. That's it. Training updates?
None. I do hope that the three of you attended the MAP conference, found it beneficial and helpful and a good time. I was not able to attend, but I heard great things about it.
Any future actions?
Yes. So on the 13th, just for a refresher, that meeting begins at 5:00 PM. So 11:13 at 5:00 PM to accommodate all of the items we had, plus Emily Betts's Upjohn Institute presentation. I can speak to Commissioner Lawrence's question regarding the moratorium. As it is written on January 1st, the company could put in an application for the existing ordinance as written, with none of these changes on it. So if we had a meeting on the 20th and made changes as a PC and MC, which one committee, we would then need a public hearing. And so hopefully at that meeting, we can then set another one. But we need 15-day notice for public hearings. So on the 20th, we choose we want another, we choose to make changes, we have to have 15 days between the 20th and the next meeting for that public hearing. So just to give a timeline of where we're at, Township Board has two meetings in December, the first and 15th. And so we would hope, we would try and somehow get on there for first and second reading or else a special meeting will be needed for the planning, for the Township Board to approve our changes, just to paint the full picture for you all. And that is all I have for you.
Thank you, Casey. Uh, let's go on to Planning Commission comments. I'll start with you, Sandy.
That's a switch. Thank you, everybody, for coming out, sticking with us till the end. Make sure you get out and vote. And again, I feel like we really need to work on this ordinance just a little bit more. We haven't done anything with the overlay. I, I feel like we're just kind of almost there, but I think one more meeting should do it for us. Thank you.
James?
I just want to thank the citizens for coming, and I have no other comments.
Joseph?
Thank you all for coming and for being so well-prepared. No other comment.
No other comment. Amber?
Oh, sure. So, yes, agree. Thank you again. Really appreciate all of the comments. I think that we just really have to do our due diligence. And I, I don't want us to rush it because we're afraid of the timeline and then not be happy with what we get. I also think that everybody in here would agree that the current ordinance is not something that we feel super comfortable with. So the timeline is a real factor, I believe. That said, one thing, actually, just a request for Casey. The email you forwarded over to us today, you said you received it on Tuesday. Is there any way you can just get those emails to us before the middle of the day on Planning Commission Day? Because fortunately enough, I, I got lucky and saw it, but I'm in the middle of my workday and don't always have visibility in the afternoon before I come to the meeting.
Yes, sometimes I'm not sure if the developers or the applicant, whoever sends me email, we're lucky to pass that on, but I can ask earlier to make sure.
That would be awesome. And then other just requests would be, and I know you've got plenty on your plate, so please understand that this comes with understanding, real life. But can we, sometimes you have our packets prepared, like Friday, sometimes it's Monday. It varies. Is there, would you feel comfortable, like, is there a committed day or something that we can just plan on? Is that, even if it's Monday, like, until that Monday?
So, uh, I would say Monday. Monday before the meeting, that would be Thursday, would be a guaranteed date.
Like Monday morning?
However, I have heard that people like the weekend to look over it. So I usually try and get it out Friday, but sometimes things come in late. And so that could be worked on. I would just hopefully have agreement from all the commissioners that Monday, Monday morning, Monday afternoon, evening could work.
When it changes throughout the day, Monday is where it gets tough. Like, I'm fine with Friday. Monday morning is great, but once we start the inconsistency of time of day, I don't know if it's a problem for you.
Kind of Kyle, can you speak to this?
Maybe it's just a knee thing, in which case I'll...
So Amber, to this packet, with a few of us being gone last week, Casey out of the area, and then coming in Monday, having some computer glitches on her end in order to get it all compiled, that's what the delay was on this packet. Otherwise, we do try to strive to get it out by Friday, or at least Thursday for you guys ahead of time. Again, it's going to be dependent, unfortunately, at times, on when we get information from applicants and so forth. It also is going to be dependent on if you, as commissioners, have any information you'd like in there. So if, as a standard, the commission would like to just say, hey, anything that's received Thursday, noon and later, don't, don't bother with it, then we can, that helps us. But that's kind of at your discretion of how, what your cutoff you'd like to be. Because we don't want...
Thursday, if you do it during the day, well, I don't know, I didn't get it, because I don't look at my email before I get here. I don't know, the rest of you? So...
I, I share Amber's concern and frustration, but in Casey's defense, I know sometimes she's waiting for, she's trying to include everything, and she's waiting for documents that are coming in. So it's kind of a balancing act, and I, I think we have to be a little flexible, but I'm sure staff understands that it's important for us to have time to, you know, see everything and review as much as possible.
And while not common, when items do come in late, we have to decide if it's worth republishing the entire packet and then making you all confused more because there's multiple packets floating out around there. So internally, we'll work to strive on getting that out to you sooner. With the, I think, general consensus now knowing that you would like it by noon on Thursday, and anything after the fact, we'll, we'll deal with from our...
Yeah, I, if you have things come in that don't get in the packet, I would prefer you not do a whole new packet. That's confusing.
And then lastly to that, I will say, formally, it's a little easier to get packets out when we have Thursday, Thursday, like, only two meetings a month. But in September, we had four meetings a month. Next month, we're supposed to have one, we have two. So there's a lot of juggling that we all have to do when we schedule meetings consecutively like this or more than what the standard is. So I'm hoping that once we get this best push-through or as we work through it, we will start to have two meetings a month, which would be easier to get that.
We appreciate all you do, Casey.
Yes.
And with that, we're adjourned.